Let me call the April meeting in the Anderson County Board of Education to order. You all will stand. Our pledge tonight will be led by Dr. Burrow.
Order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think somebody get the light.
Somebody need to get some light switch back there. It happens all the time. Thank you, Dr. Burrow. We're gonna, we're gonna switch things up. We've got some special guests here tonight from the Norris Middle School, and we want to recognize them, so Dr. Burrow's gonna make that presentation. And then y'all can get out if you want.
Dr. Perry.
Dr. Perry, what did I say?
Dr. Burrow.
Oh, Dr. Burrow.
You say Dr. Burrow.
All you doctors look like.
If the team and the coach will come forward.
I'm a real doctor.
Yeah, there you go. He can light a prescription.
That's right.
Boy, they have some big old boys, don't they?
Y'all look like football players.
I know, I know, you're big old boys.
They are big, yeah.
It's always an honor when we get to have a team or have a group that does something special. And so tonight, we're here to honor the Norris Middle School basketball team. Y'all did a great job this year, and the board has a resolution. And I apologize if my voice and I messed something up. I've had credit for the last two weeks. This is a resolution honoring Norris Middle School Boys Basketball Team by the Anderson County Board of Education. Whereas throughout the season, the Norris Middle School senators exhibit tenacity and the determination that would lead them to playing in the basketball state tournament for the first time in school history. Working together, these young men illustrated that drive, skill, and good sportsmanship can certainly pay off. And they serve as a shining example to other athletes in Tennessee in general. And whereas Coach Travis Trumble and Darryl Lawson are to be commended for their hard work and dedication that community, which provided this team of young athletes with the achievement and the joy of competing at the state basketball tournament for the first time in school history, which they will certainly cherish for the rest of their lives. Whereas the talented players for this center team were Waylon Turnbull, Landon Sharp, Reese Young, Braxton Faust, Colton Lawson, Evan Young, Trevor Davis, Cooper Downs, Zaylan Berger, and Eli Lindsay. And whereas Coach Travis Trumble and Darryl Lawson led this team to this amazing accomplishment by utilizing a combination of all the attributes of a state tournament caliber basketball team. And whereas, in this season of distinction, the Norris Middle School Center Basketball Team rode a wave of victories all the way to competing the first time at the state tournament in school history. That's to be commended because there's a lot of schools out there. Therefore, now let it be resolved, the Anderson County Board of Education commends the Norris Middle School Center Boys Basketball Team for competing at the highest level in the state tournament for the first time in history. And be it further resolved that the Anderson County Board of Education recognizes the achievements of the players, coaches, and staff for those hard work that made it past hell valley. Wholeheartedly adopted by the Anderson County Board of Education, meeting in regular service is April 11, 2014. And we recognize April 11, 2014 as Norris Senator Basketball Day. So congratulations on job well done. Coach, you wanna say a few words?
I've never heard a coach say a few congratulations.
Whatever you want, slide.
I just wanna say I'm super proud of this group of kids. They're family. They're not only a family to each other, brothers to each other, they're family to me as well. I've never been as proud as I have been of this basketball team, of the way they fought and the way they, they just, they were just a greedy bunch. They played their hearts out, left everything on the floor every night. I love each and every one of them for the rest of their lives. Y'all always got off the track. Love you guys.
Get in here. I can get in front because I ain't as tall as you. Thank you. Congratulations. We appreciate you. So we'll see you as in the next year in full uniform, right?
All right. Congratulations, fellas. And if you all wanna stick around, you're welcome. It's an exciting, exciting school board meeting.
We understand.
Or if you all wanna make your exit now, we'll give you that opportunity. So congratulations again. Can't believe they're not staying.
He needs to hold those big boys back.
Yeah, yes. All right. The next item is something good. We're gonna celebrate our CTE program. Suzie Schmidt is coming up with some middle school coaches.
Tab. This tab?
Yeah, right at the top of your computer.
Oh, hold on, hold on. Don't let me push too many buttons. I got it. I got it. There you go.
We are super excited tonight to introduce you to four amazing CTE coaches. Last year, we received a middle school grant. And in that grant, we wrote that we were going to, for the very first time, hire four CTE coaches to work with middle school students, particularly eighth grade, to prepare them for the high school. And we really have, we've never done this, so we really didn't know. We were kinda starting from scratch. And so these four fabulous people, we hired them, and they started. And this year has been absolutely amazing. And so we have asked them to come and share with you the experiences that our kids have had in preparing them for high school. And I'd like to introduce them. We have Courtney Bachelor from Lake City Middle School. We have Ben Weaver from Norris Middle School. Courtney Van Deverne from Norwood Middle School. Did I say Norwood?
Nope, you got it, you got it.
And Hope Martin Holdaway. She's from Clinton Middle School. And so they're going to share some things they've done. So I'm gonna turn it over there.
It's a pleasure to be here, and I just wanna thank Suzie and Kelly Myers for trusting us and to be good stewards of the grant money. And we feel like we have learned a lot this year, so much so that we're ready. We've already got our summer time-together plan so we can start working on the next year. So if you're looking to look that through. We've been looking at the numbers. We've made some really positive numbers. Two that I'm really proud of is, of course, our 100%. But that is, these students have been at least one time to ACHS or CHS, and they've been at least once to ACCTC. So we know we still have some growth, so we're making some SMART goals so that we can achieve those. But I also have a couple of pictures of our Clinton kids up there. One other thing that we wanted to talk about was how we have invested in a new online platform called Major Clarity. And although we kinda got a late start this year, do some things out of our control, this is an online platform that will follow the children through college. So they'll build their resume in real time. They have access to their grades. They have access to their GPA. You know, no more hunting around for your transcripts. It's gonna be all there for them. And also, our eighth graders are now getting OSHA 10 certifications. They're taking personal finance classes. They're taking, so they're actually getting high school credit as eighth graders. So we're really working hard to expose them to all the cool careers there are. And I don't know about you guys, we've even learned about some careers we didn't even know existed. So it's definitely been an eye-opening experience. But I'm gonna go ahead and pass it off. Look, one of my favorite things about this new job is we were able to get three vans so we can take our students on field trips free of cost to them, which is really great because field trips can get expensive. So we start at the high schools because our goal is to prepare them for high school, and they have to pick a program of study. So when they go to the high school, they look at the programs of study and are able to meet the teachers and get hands-on experiences with that. And then after that, we'll take them to colleges, and we've been to, keep in chains. We've been to TCAT, Pellicippi, Rum State, and LMV Vet School. And that vet school is very neat to get together at. And then after that, we also get to take them to industries based on the different careers that they're wanting. And we've been all over Anderson County, and I am so grateful for the businesses in Anderson County to open up, allow our students to come in and talk to them, sometimes give us free things like the cookies at Melbourne Bakery. But they have been great, so we're very grateful for that. And one of their favorite trips is we get to stop at Chick-fil-A for lunch. The rest are really great.
Another major part of this whole initiative has been grants that we received. Kelly Myers worked tirelessly to get it for each school. And so as part of that grant, we were instructed to start a school-based enterprise. So at Norris Middle, if you can see on the monitor there, our STEM teacher, Andrew Harrison, renovated an entire classroom space he had out in our STEM and van building and totally transformed what was a storage closet into the senator sideline shop where we sell items that they make in class, and they customize their own gear, and they've been selling them to students, teachers, and the community. And then also, obviously, part of that grant came the equipment that we had to invest in to make all this stuff. So here are the equipment that we've used. It's all commercial-grade items that you would see in a print shop. We have a banner printer that, really exciting for our teachers because they get to make posters, and we get to make the banners that you see in Anderson County High School and Clinton High School where they're recognizing the high-achieving students. And then also, for our basketball team that you just saw and other teams that have achieved great feats in athletics, we get to make the banners to hang out in the gym to recognize all those teams. But while the students are doing that, they're getting experience with production, customer service, management, marketing, finance, and accounting, all within this school-based enterprise. So even though we're kinda tricking them into learning all those things because they're getting to work in this exciting new shop, they're getting some experience that they've never been able to have access to before. So it's been a great deal, and we're super excited about how it's gonna continue to grow.
Okay, so if you look, this is our enterprise at Lake City Middle School, and the kids have come up with everything. So they, even from the symbol, literally everything. So there's three parts to our business class. There's a business team. There's a...
Bit lost.
Oh, yes. Okay, so what you're getting right now, the kids actually produced these. So I told them that I was coming to talk to you all about what we're doing. And so we have a business team, we have a media team, and we have the production team. And so our media team actually helped to get a career fair together, and that picture is all the people in our community, but they got to come out. And then the last picture is our production team. So this is actually the kids working with the equipment that we got at Lake City Middle School. And yeah, they're just getting a really good experience of that. It's funny because we do a rotation. So if you, you know, if you're on the business team at the beginning, then you rotate over to the media and the production. And I guess I, I don't like the production team, but I love the media team. They're getting some really good experiences like that.
We just appreciate the opportunity. So thank you very much. We're loving it. We are absolutely loving it, so we appreciate it.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. For those who couldn't see, I don't know, you can't see it anyway. These are socks with all our faces on it. It's the scariest pair of socks.
Well, they have workouts in the morning.
That's right. I love it, I love it. Thank you all for coming. Yeah, thank you. All right. We had no persons registered to be heard for tonight, so we'll move on.
Do we need to approve the resolution?
Yes. Oh, for the boys' basketball team, thank you. You've heard the resolution? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve the resolution honoring the Norris Middle School Boys Basketball Team. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. opposed, no. Of course, there is none. Thank you for catching me on that. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second approve the agenda is written. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. opposed, no. That is done. The next item is the consent agenda. It has the minute to the last meeting, human resources report, student services report, field trips, and our sports schedules.
Would we approve?
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. opposed, no. All right. There was no executive approval. I don't even have any comments from the chair tonight, so be glad to know that. We do need to do our perfect attendance awards. These are our teachers with perfect attendance who will receive a check. Mr. Bell, would you start us off over there?
Sure will. I have from Claxton Elementary School, Miranda Rensnick.
I have Amanda Powers from Clinton High School.
I have Steve Wall from Clinton High School.
And I have Katie Russell from Norwood Middle School and Belinda Bass from Norwood Elementary School.
All right. I'm recognizing Caroline Byrd from Norris Middle.
I have Stuart Hicks from the Office of Technology.
Angela Goode from Food Services.
And Sandra Swisher from Norris Elementary.
Justin Jethoe from Office of Technology.
All right. So congratulations to all those folks. Appreciate your commitment to attendance. Next item is comments from our student board members. Y'all ready?
Never.
Always ready.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see all of y'all.
I know.
Shout out to our CTE people. I very passionate myself about CTE, and that is fantastic. I have a brother in the middle school. Very, very high praise. At Anderson County, we're doing great. Kinda ready for this to be over, but it has everyone else, I'm sure. Testing is going good. Sports, fantastic. Really just a glowing report at once. Thank you.
That's Mr. Downston.
Mr. Downs. I'm supposed to say really good thanks. That's great. We love Mr. Downs. Thank you, but he's our head.
I have a comment for Audrey. Audrey has been recognized as the daughter of the American Revolution, and she has the Good Citizens Award.
Good deal. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. So seniors at Clinton High School are gearing up for graduation, preparing for the next steps, whether it's college, the military, entering the workforce. Our school recently hosted a visit from a local recruiting recruiter who forecasted a member of the class of 2024 will be graduating from Boot Camp on this day. That is our CHS graduation ceremony. So that's pretty cool. On campus students are currently set to unfail, asking their college enrollments, meeting with success coaches, academic advisors, attending events such as Fall Admin Day and Pre-PhD at other universities. College representatives from Pellicippi State Community College and East City State University have visited CHS in the past two weeks to ensure students will support it and are completing enrollment requirements. Underclassmen are now registering for the enroll course at State Community College for the fall of 2024. Everything's good.
Everything's good. Thank you. All right. Thanks, y'all. We may not get to see you again. You're all gonna be like graduating and doing busy things. So thank you for all of your hard work and fun reports and just being who you are. So we wish you well in the future. Next item is the director's report.
I'm like you. I don't have a lot going on right now. I think all mine is down here in the financial and budget and salary schedules and funding for Claxton and scoreboards. I've got all of that stuff I've been working on, so I'll work on it in a little bit.
All right. The next item is a report from the workshop from Monday night. Ms. Portwood, you got anything that's not on the action items that needs to be reported?
Well, we talked about quite a few things, and I left my notes laying in my garage because I got here at the last minute. I've been out of town. We talked about bus contracts. We talked about, what else did we talk about, guys? Y'all can help me out.
My calendar events. It's up our for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, my calendar events, when graduation, when awards night is, et cetera, and so on. Who are board scholarships, the selection of those. The, Dr. Perry talked about funding for the Claxton Elementary School and the scoreboard for Lake City's ball field. And we also moved our, decided to move our May meeting since the ninth, I think has a conflict with the schools for awards or something. We're going to move our meeting to maybe eighth, which is on Wednesday.
All right. Thank you. Moving into action items, financial report.
On the financial report, we had four appropriations. The first one was for $100,000 to the general purpose. The other one was for insecurity grant. The other one was for the STEM grants from Mattel for Kids. And the last one was for the math implementation grant. And those were discussed in length at the budget workshop on Monday night. So 1A through 1D.
All right. Is there a motion to approve appropriations?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion to second approve appropriations, 1A through 1D. Any discussion? Not? Roll call vote?
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Gillamottis?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burrow?
All right. Transfers?
On transfers, we had 1A through 1I. And these were, for the most part, just really trying to clean up where they needed to move everything for competitions, for floor maintenance, for contracted services, to make sure we had all of our salaries in the right places for our van drivers and things like that. So this is all year-end transfers. Nothing, nothing on there that's, that's not common.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve transfers 2A through 2J.
Second.
Motion to second approve transfers 2A through 2J. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. opposed, no. That is done. Nothing else on the budget. Now we have our budget.
Proposed budget for this year is the same, the same revenue stream that we had last year. $77 million, 09628. And the overall budget is $78 million, 035593. It's out of balance right now, about 963. I don't have that exact number, but we do have a healthy fund balance to take care of that across the street. I would ask that you approve the budget. And things will change because we still don't have firm numbers from the state, from the new TESA. We go to our fiscal conference the first of May, and we'll hear some more things like that. But we anticipate it can only go up. It won't go down.
It's our best guess right now.
If the state, or we, I should say, rather than if, the state legislature passes the voucher thing, how much is that gonna affect our budget?
It won't affect any this year.
I mean, yeah.
It will next year if we lose students. That's what it could, you know, they say we could lose up to, they're saying 10%. Well, if you lose 10% of students, that's 600 students. That's right at about $6.3 million.
Remind everybody that Mr. Reagan is gonna be at a meeting tomorrow afternoon. Anybody can be there, but.
It's over here at 2:00 in the...
Commission room.
Commission room.
It's, apparently it's very close, the vote is down there, so.
They did roll everything this week. They were supposed to vote on both the House and the Senate, and they rolled both of those bills one more week, rolled them out. So I think that's what you were saying, that's probably a pretty close vote.
I have a question about the budget.
Yes.
It says actual.
This is just what we spent so far this year.
Okay, but, but the department request is 78 million?
Yes.
And we, this year's budget's 71?
No, no, 77.
Okay, but it said 71, no?
That's, no, that was, hold on a minute.
Remind, I may be...
That was, that was in 2023. That was two years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. That was before we got the TESA funding last year because, you know, last year we got almost six, an extra $6 million that we put in salaries. That's where that money come from. So it's the same, it is the same budget. Last year, our budget was at $1.5 million, and this year it's out about 93. 960, yeah, less than last year. We're about $600,000 better this year. And there is a, everything's been funded. There's a 4% pay raise in there for all staff.
We need a motion to approve the...
We do.
Move that we approve the budget.
Motion to second approve the budget for our next school year. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. opposed, no. Thank you.
I'm very proud that we're giving the teachers 4% raise.
Yes. And when we look at the salary schedules in a minute, I think that will show a good, a good picture, too. This is the cafeteria budget. It is pretty much self-explanatory. There is a couple of things in here that we talked about on Monday night. These lunch payments, some of them are still enough from last year because, as you know, we just started free lunch at Norris Elementary School and Anderson County High School at Christmas. And so we still have, looking at, trying to see how that's gonna pan out to make sure we can go forward with free lunch for everybody. So that, that's what our proposal is, to do free lunch for everybody, if there's any way we can do it. Her budget is $4 million. Last year it was $4 million, 156. This year it's gonna be $4 million, 132, 170. I think that's what it is. I could be wrong. I may, I may get it. 4.8. It was 4.702 last year. It's 4.829 this year. Gotta have a raise in there.
Motion to approve the cafeteria budget?
So moved. Second.
Motion to second approve the central cafeteria budget. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. opposed, no. Thank you. Next item is the salary schedule.
Salary schedules. I'm real proud of this one. Our starting pay for a teacher, a BS with zero steps, next year will be $47,500. As you know, we've got to get to $50,000 in two more years, and I think that is very doable now. Starting pay for MS is $50,364. EDS, or a master's plus 30, is $54,794. And EDD, or PhD, is 57. And they go out to 62, 303, 67, 72, and 78. And like I say, all these have 4% in. We still need to work on some classified. I think we still got some work to do on those. And hopefully, if money works, we can do more with that. But I am glad y'all gave everybody the 4% pay raise.
All right. So a motion to approve the salary schedules.
So moved.
Motion to second approve the 2024, 2025 salary schedule. Motion to second to approve the 2024, 2025 salary schedules. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That's done. The next item is funding for Claxton Elementary School. We had approved the USDA funding, but we are opting to go with the regular bond issue funding.
Yes.
Want to make comments on that?
So when we looked at it, USDA loan was gonna be about a half percent lower on the interest rate, but it was gonna take us 28 to 30 months before we could actually put the shovel in the ground. And there were so many hoops that you had to jump for, you had to hire extra help, you had to send everything through the state, it had to be proposed, and they had to approve it, they had to approve any changes. So it was gonna put the start of the school out almost three years, and we just believe that Claxton needs it right now, we have the funds to do it. There's about a 3.8, with USDA funding, there was a 3.2 million dollar gap that we've got to do between now and 2031, and with the, with the regular loan, it's about 2.8 million, it's about 600,000 more, but we're gonna pay the loan off more, and we're gonna save that much or more because of the way we can, we're more in control. If we see there's something wrong, the sink's in the wrong place, we can go back and ask the architect to change it, and we don't have to send all the drawings back to do everything. So I have talked with the county commissioners and with school board in this area, and they're on board with this, so I would ask you to approve moving ahead with funding the new Claxton school with a regular bond issue.
I'll make a motion as to what he's just saying.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
How much is the total school revenue?
Right at 20 million's what we hope. We've already got three point, a little over 3 million in it, because, but the great thing about it is we had that fund balance, and we're gonna try to pay a lot of the architect fees and a lot of that stuff. We want this 20 million to be on students, and so we're gonna try to do some of those other things out of the regular budget.
Have we ever finalized that other exit offer?
No, y'all are gonna work on that tonight.
Yep.
We, we just got the report, and now, once we've done this, they still have not told us how much of an easement we need, but once they tell us how much of easement we need, we're gonna go forward with it.
Dr. Perrin, I'm glad to see that. The classified custodial maintenance secretary said I've noticed quite a chump in the last few years to bring them up to where they need to be. That's exciting to me.
When I started, we were, we were below $9, yeah.
All right, motion on the floor is using regular bond funding for Claxton School. Is there any other discussion on that?
What about the land?
Land's already been paid for.
This is down here.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm talking about the land that we sold.
It's down here.
So it's coming up.
It's coming up.
You say we've already bought that place?
The 3 million, the church, yeah, the church is already, we've already done it, yeah. Yeah, we bought it last year, so it's already bought and paid for.
I knew we were in the process, I didn't know we'd...
Yeah, it's ours.
It is ours.
It is ours, yes. Yep.
The county commission's already approved it.
Yeah, they've already approved it, everything, so it is theirs.
Did they ever, Dr. Perrin, I guess we did discuss it, or I didn't get it, the road coming behind it, how it's been working out?
That's what we're, we're gonna talk about here, and just when we get to life development sooner, you'll think, yep.
All right. Any other discussion on the funding? All right, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is done.
We, we talked about this on Monday night, we had Rocky Top come to us, we used the football field and the baseball field at the park up there, I don't know what the name of the park is, it's, but it's at Lake City.
George Templin.
George Templin, and so we wanna be good partners with them, and they've asked us to, to help with funding for a new scoreboard, and I would ask the board to allow us to, to help them up to $10,000 for the installation of a new scoreboard.
So moved.
Second.
So at 10,000?
Yeah, up to.
Up to?
Yep.
Okay, because that doesn't fund it, by my math, right?
No.
98.50.
Yeah, we need 98.50s, all we need, all they need.
Oh, okay, oh, that's what's left, okay.
Yep, yep, all right.
So the motion is up to $10,000 to help fund the Lake City scoreboard, any discussion?
Did we talk at the workshop about if they've already collected some of this 98.50 that we would, we would make up the difference that they need?
Yes, yes.
So it may, it may not even be 98.50.
Yeah, it may not be that, no. If they've got any more donors, yes.
The motion is up to.
Up to.
Yep. Any other discussion, questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is done. I know y'all talked about bus contracts Monday night, is there anything to come before the board tonight?
No, after, after the memo and talking to our attorneys, I think it's done.
All right, next item is funding for the sale of the Life Development Center.
So what I would ask the board on this is, is we sign the... .........................................................................................................
Designated just for them.
Yep.
So we, yeah, we just need a motion to designate that money for the Claxton Elementary School.
So moved on that.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions or discussion? Not all in favor of using the proceeds from the sale of the Life Development Center to secure the land for the road at Claxton Elementary? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is done. The last item is, we have a special presentation that Ms. Portwood is gonna make, so I'll turn it over to you.
Every year, we have two student school board members, and every year we can't get any of it because they're so good, and these two have not been any less than excellent. We call them the A-teens, plus an instruction of A, but we'd like to give you all, we'll give it as part of your graduation gift, and if you can be here in May, we'd love to see you, and if not, we'll use you at the end of the class.
All right, other items to come before the regular board meeting tonight?
Do we need a motion to, for Dr. Perrin to start the process on the purchase of the property, or no?
No, that took care of it.
That's...
Yep.
Can I add something to the agenda? So, is something?
Depends on what it is.
Well, I say, I'm not saying it right, I'm saying a house. Y'all, what about that? Have you heard about it?
It's right down from my house.
Oh, it is? Okay, well, children go into DHS, and they sleep on the floor, and babies that are taken away for whatever reason, and I would love for this board to go on record and help that project. I mean, even a small amount would be, you know, very much appreciated. And so to help these children that will one day hopefully attend members in county schools...